Spices.
Okay.
All right, it should be coming up now.
Yep, it's coming up.
Ms. Mitchell, I would just say the return to school resolution.
Okay.
Cause this one has too many connectors.
It does, yeah. I was reading it. Alright. Alright, good evening everyone and welcome to Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-one regular school board meeting. As we get started tonight, I just want to take a few moments to celebrate a monumental event today. We saw our first female vice president sworn in the office, so we're just looking forward to amazing things by Vice President Harris and just wanted to take a few moments to celebrate that. With that, Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Gator?
Here, sorry.
Mrs. Moomin?
So Barbara is here, but she's having technical difficulties.
Okay, Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here. All members are accounted for. At this time, we're going to move to item one point two of the Pledge of Our Allegiance and Mr. Freeman has graciously volunteered to lead us in that this evening.
Board, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome, thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
We're at item one point three. We need a motion on the floor to approve tonight's agenda, but before we do so, Dr. Rock, Mr. Jolly, are there any changes?
No. Just to the agenda tonight.
Alright, thank you very much. Let me have a motion on the floor to approve item one point three, please.
Madam Chair, I move item one point three, the approval of Warrensville Heights board meeting, regular board meeting, October, um, excuse me, January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Um, there's no further discussion on this one. Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Moomin?
She's not on yet. I think she's still trying to get on.
Yep.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
And Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes for zero. The next item on our agenda is public participation.
Okay, I have the public participation comments. And I will share, share those at this time. So we have a series of, um, public comments. We'll go back.
Mr. Jolly, can you let Barbara in, please?
Yes, ma'am. She's not coming up.
Madam Chair, is she able to just call in or does she have to be on video?
That's what I'm going to recommend to her sister. She's having struggles.
Yes, she's not in the waiting room at all. I'm looking in there, she's not there.
You go ahead, Mr. Jolly. I'm getting her to tell her to get the phone number.
As soon as she comes, I will, um, put, place her in. So we have our first one is from a parent, a mother of four. She has students in elementary and kindergarten and she left them, um, message, um, received. And basically, um, do you want me to read them or do you want, um, you know, people to read them on the stage? I could read all of them. Some of them are pretty long.
Some of them are pretty long, um.
But in essence.
Go ahead. I think they're all on the same topic based on what we saw um, from an email prior to, are these in addition to?
Yeah, these are some of the ones I sent to the board already, but this one is basically, um, this parent, uh, just feels like her kids are not learning at home and she wants them to come back. And as I recall, I did call this parent and she stated that she would keep one of her students online, could be doing very well, but the other, she has some twins that she believes need to be in school. So she's a little nervous, but she wants them to come back. And all of these are a result of the, um, the survey that we did. On this other one, this one, um, stating that their, their student needs more contact with people. She needs to be in person to learn. Um, they have issues with focusing so far. That parent did want to share her name, Ms. Jones. Um, Ms. Freeman, again, um, this is another parent who has three students in the middle school. Um, she just feels like, um, her student, that virtual learning is not set up for everybody and that, um, she's ready for hers to come back. She feels like she failed her student, um, but she also is concerned about her student's health. And then this, this one is from Ms. Clark, a high school senior. Um, again, this is another one. Um, just stating their, their concern and that they feel like their child is, um, is, is falling behind. Another senior, this is a band parent, um, to share her concerns. And we'll make all these public, um, comments available on our website. And this is another one about, um, another parent just said this about, uh, uh, some issues with contacting teachers that we addressed. Another parent, um, just talked about the E-Lab and her son, her son needs one, one-on-one to assure that they're doing well. And then, and a concern again is about safety. And, um, she believes he needs to be in class with a teacher. And because she's not home and she doesn't have a support system.
I can't get my sound on my computer. What did she touch?
And then we also had, and this wasn't included, but we also had a, a letter from Ms. Levert, um, who's another parent that sent a long email. She sent that one to the board. They, um, clearly articulated her concerns. So with that, um, all of our parent participation this week, all centered around parents who have concerns, but, um, a lot of them want their kids to come back to school. So that portal is open, emails are accessible to twelve noon, the day of the board meeting. So we went all the way to today, where we put the presentation together. And any and every one that we get, we will present, um, at the next board meeting. Alright, so we're next up on the agenda, um. Alright, um, the agenda, let me get the agenda back up. Alright, next up on the agenda, we have, um, Mrs. Lozar and Dr. Kaver to discuss the Warrensville Heights, Heights, um, School District Literacy Initiative. Rock, so you could take control of the screen, can't you?
Uh, let me check here. Uh, no, if you go in, give me co-hosts, so in the top corner of my box and those blue dots.
Yep, I got it.
And then if you give me co-host rights, then I should be able to share my screen. It still says host disabled participants to screen share.
Go ahead.
Oh, here we go. So I'm gonna, uh, take a few minutes just to kind of let you guys know what we're doing in Warrensville Heights City School District uh, in regards to literacy, um, and take you kind of on a little journey of some things that we've been doing over the past few years. Um, so it's, we kind of started our journey in two thousand eighteen where we really, really started focusing on a literacy initiative because we were, um, presented with an opportunity, uh, for the state striving readers grant. Um, so back in two thousand eighteen, uh, we worked with a consortium with the ESC and nine other school districts around us. And we applied for this grant to support our K to five, um, literacy initiatives. Um, through that grant, we actually were awarded forty-nine thousand dollars, um, over a two-year period. And within the work of that grant, the district created a local literacy plan. Um, and part of the work was, uh, developing this plan and outlining our goals and our action steps to increase literacy achievement. So our overarching goal, um, that we actually, that was part of our district improvement plan was reading grade level proficiency will improve by seven percent each year through twenty twenty-one as measured by the Ohio State Test and/or the state approved vendor assessment. So that was like our overarching goal that was leading the work of our liter, our local literacy plan. Um, and then within that goal, we had four sub-goals, um, that really drive practices that we put in place in the schools. Our first sub-goal was that eighty percent of students in grades K through twelve met their individual growth target. Um, sixty percent of students who participated in our district's pre-K program would score on track, um, as measured by the state approved vendor assessment. So that's really looking at our students who are in our pre-K program and when they go into kindergarten, if they're reading on track. And I will tell you, um, we actually were looking at these goals today. And we have surpassed, uh, the goal of sixty percent here, so we'll be revising, um, the goal and other goals on this page too. Uh, fifty percent of students in grades one through three will move from not on track to on track. So that's kind of deals with our K to three, um, literacy measure on our state report card and making sure that we're moving those students who are showing that they're not on grade level for reading, but getting them back on track. Um, and then that sixty percent of students in English two will be proficient on the end of course exam. Um, so those goals really lead the work that are, we're taking in, in regards to literacy. So that first grant, the striving readers grant was only, um, it was only a two-year grant and then, um, the Ohio Department of Education recently was awarded forty-two million dollars um, for comprehensive literacy state development grant from the U.S. Department of Education. Um, so to build on the work that we were doing with our striving readers grant, um, and to really improve the language and literacy development of our state's children. Uh, so we joined in a partnership with the ESC and this time it wasn't nine districts, only three districts, um, chose to move forward with Warrensville Heights, so four districts total, working in this partnership, um, to really, really dive deep into that language and literacy development. Um, and I think a lot of the reason why some of the other districts might have chose not to apply for the grant is because, um, there's a lot of work involved and there's a lot of requirements. Um, but the end goal and the end outcome is totally worth it. Um, so with that, we knew that we are doing all of this work to continue with our K to five literacy initiative, but we know that we actually needed to band across all of our grade levels, pre-K through twelfth grade. Um, so we formed a district literacy committee. Um, and our district literacy committee really drives the work that's, that goes on in the buildings. Um, and we meet, uh, we met two times this year. Uh, we actually just met this afternoon. Um, and we really look at those literacy goals that I showed you, um, and we put in action plans in place um, so that we can inform the staff at the building level, what's going on, provide professional development. Um, and so with that comprehensive literacy state development grant that we received, we received, um, we were awarded over five hundred, we were, uh, sorry, we were awarded five hundred thousand dollars over a four-year period to carry out our initiative. Um, and the work and the requirements that this grant is pushing us to just know a lot more about literacy. And then in the end outcome is for Warrensville Heights Elementary School to become a model school site for the state of Ohio. Um, so our goal ultimately is for our Warrensville Heights Elementary School to be that model site so that other school districts will come to us to see what we did in literacy, um, to really push student achievement, um, in, in reading proficiency. Um, so the state has some very ambitious goals, but I think that they're attainable for us to, uh, meet because we've already started the work and we've already saw, we've already seen tremendous growth with our literacy work. Um, but you can see that goal one, um, they're looking at by the school year of twenty twenty-four, that the proposed model site, so that would be Warrensville Heights Elementary School, um, would increase the percentage of students proficient in ELA, so that's measured by the state test, so that's looking at grades three and up. Or for those grades in pre-K through two, to make sure that they're on track for reading. Um, so either increasing that by twenty-five percent points or hitting at least eight, eighty percent proficiency. Um, and then goal two is very similar, but it's really focusing on, um, the disadvantaged students. And then goal three doesn't pertain to Warrensville Heights Elementary School because we are, um, one of the grant recipients. Um, but that's more so for those other districts that didn't apply for the grant and just still making sure that at the state level, they're providing everyone the opportunity to increase the, um, the reading, um, achievement. Um, so I am confident and I know all the people on our literacy team and our Warrensville Heights Elementary staff is confident that we will be a model school site at the end of this four-year period, which is really exciting for our district. Um, so how are we going to obtain that goal? So all the work we've been doing has involved around this concept of the science of reading. Um, so the science of reading, it's not a philosophy, it's not a curriculum that we can go and buy. It actually is the research that is done, um, and learning how the brain learns to read. Um, so when we look at these, um, this picture of the brain and we look at these parts of the brain, all of these parts encompasses how we learn to read. Um, and I don't think as adults, we really pay too much attention when we're reading, um, but it really is a process and it's a very complex process. Um, in order to read, we use all these parts in our brain. So one area of the brain will trigger the actual letters they see in the word. So if we're looking up, if we're thinking about the word cat, um, the auditory part of the brain, it's going to look at the letter C-A-T. And then, then there's the other part that now is going to put the sounds to those letters. Um, and then there's another part that actually is going to blend all those letters together to actually form the word. Um, and that's like early foundation skills. So that's what our preschool and our kindergarten and our first grade teachers, that's the process in which they are kind of wiring our students' brain to read. Um, and as adults, we don't think about that. We just see C-A-T, cat. So we automatically do those things, but we have to teach our students to do that. Um, and then after identifying that word, we have to actually, um, understand the meaning of that word and the interpretation of that word in the context that we're reading it. Um, so all of that is very, very complexed. Um, and I don't think we really think about that as, as we are reading, you know, uh, everything in our day-to-day lives. Um, but this is the work that our teachers are learning, that process and, um, kind of how that brain works um, so that they can make our students better readers. Um, and a lot of the work is, is around the simple view of reading. So it's really understanding the process in which we read. Um, so even though we have the word simple in the name of this visual, again, reading is very complex. Um, so as we introduce the simple review of reading to staff, we introduce it as a simple math equation, right? So we have the multiplication sign there. So we know in math that when you have a number and you multiply it by zero, the product is always zero. So think about that as learning to read. So when we have one component of the simple view of reading, which is your word recognition, so, which is the pieces that I just talked about, looking at the letters, understanding that the letters make sounds, blending the sounds together, and then actually reading the word and then knowing that automatically, that's what word recognition is. Um, and if we don't have word recognition, um, then we're not going to be able to read for comprehension. And then when we look at the language comprehension piece, um, we're looking at, uh, like oral language skills, so really understanding, um, what we're hearing. So background knowledge plays a huge role in this and vocabulary, understanding the words' meaning in the context. So if we have, if we can do really well at decoding words and reading words on a page, but we can't do really well at understanding what those words mean, then we still can't have reading comprehension. So we really need both of these pieces and parts to fully have students, um, comprehend what they're reading. So teaching reading is essential and it's urgent in all grade levels. So even when we look at the secondary level, um, now we're getting into more complex words and really breaking those words up into word parts and understanding what those word parts mean, um, is really, really important. Um, we know that teaching reading is complex, um, and we know that teaching reading, um, should be guided by science. Um, so there's a lot of research that has come out recently, well, that has been brought to our attention recently, that um, goes over the science of reading and we've been really taking the time to, um, put that information in front of our literacy committee and then that literacy committee takes it back to their buildings and they share it out at, um, building staff meetings and building meetings. Um, so that way, we're all on the same page as it pertains to reading. Um, part of our work too is making sure that we have the big five ideas of reading embedded into our instruction. So when we look at our literacy block at the elementary level and we look at our literacy block at the secondary level, we want to ensure that they have these five major components here. Um, so you can see that fluency, vocabulary and comprehension, it's across the board. Um, and when you look at phonemic awareness and phonics, that's kind of embedded in that secondary, uh, word study piece. And then for the secondary, um, students, it's really looking at motivation too, because in all reality, if they didn't learn to read in elementary school, they're losing interest in reading. So it's really, how are we motivating them to read? What text are we putting in front of them that they want to read? And I will say that our secondary level over the last few years has done an outstanding job with selecting summer reading, um, that are really relevant to the students and really engaging. I know I've read them myself, um, and I, I love every book that they've chose, so I know that the students have to as well. Um, so again, it's not about, you know, just the curriculum department knowing what is going on with this research and reading. So it's really making sure that the information is disseminated back to our teams. It's reflected upon, we get feedback, um, we hear what information, what more information is needed or what professional development is needed or what resources is needed and we kind of, um, continue that communication loop. Um, so today we had our district leadership team meeting and, uh, we, one of our district priorities is centered around, um, a literacy initiative. Um, so we took some time today during that meeting, we went through and we reviewed, um, some of the things that we just talked about, uh, here tonight. Um, our Warrensville Heights Elementary School, um, with all of them coming in now as one building, they have one staff meeting a month that is designated for, um, literacy only, so they provide their staff. I mean, we had a hundred people on our last two staff meetings, um, with information around literacy and really looking at those five major components and breaking those up so that we're all having the same language. The middle school has also been developing or devoting staff meetings, um, to sharing out the the literacy initiatives that are taking place in their school and then the high school is also doing the same thing. Um, we also have a cohort of K to five staff members that is going through this letters training. Uh, and so letters actually is, it, it's pretty much like a college course, um, that is teaching them the science of reading. So it's teaching them how the brain works to read. Um, it's teaching them and then it goes into those five major components of reading, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. Um, so we have twenty-two staff members going through that and the letter stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. Um, and that's actually a two-year, we'll be doing that with this initial cohort for two years. Um, so they're really taking their time outside of school to actually, there's a map, there's, um, like textbooks that they have to read and online modules they have to go through. And then we meet as a cohort once a quarter to review the unit that they had discussed. And we'll be getting a second cohort of teachers, um, kind of started at the end of this year, so that way we can get all of our staff members trained. We're also going through a series of professional development with Dr. Anita Archer on explicit instruction and how that plays a huge role in, um, how our students are reading and making sure that there's a systematic way and providing them the strategies to become better readers. And that is district-wide, so we have participants from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade, um, and it's not just English teachers. Uh, we have encore teachers involved in that. We actually have our, um, our family liaison at the elementary level. She's involved because sometimes she goes into classrooms. Um, so it's really focusing on all of our staff in general. And then we're really looking at our instruction, um, and making sure that our curriculum resources that we have in place are aligned with the science of reading and then also piloting, um, some other programs. So we saw that, um, fifth grade didn't really have a program, a word study program. So we're going to be piloting a program with them, um, and seeing, because we know that's a skill and, um, a piece that we are missing. Um, so we're going to put that into place, pilot it and see if it's going to work for, for our students. Um, and then we also have some tier-two programs that we'll be piloting as well, um. So that's kind of just a little bit of background on what we've been doing as a district, um, as far as our literacy goes. Um, so I'll open up the floor if anybody has any questions they want to ask.
First, could you give me the meaning for the L E T R S? What did you say that meant?
It is um, Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling.
Okay. And are you, are you implementing that this year? Are you trying to implement that this year?
Yeah, so we have a cohort of twenty-two staff members pre-k, or I'm sorry, K through fifth grade that have started the training with letters. Uh, so we're, we're actually doing our Unit Two session on Friday. And our state, a state support team member uh, facilitates those um, meetings. So we'll go through, there's eight units total. And this year, that first cohort's going to get through four.
Okay.
And then we'll get through the other four next year.
Okay, so that's working, how is that working with the student being at home?
Um, so something that was kind of, the first unit was really around how the brain learns to read. Um, and then they have these bridge to practice activities and the first bridge to practice activity is um, pretty much identifying a student that you want to work with throughout the whole um, eight units. And uh, the first one I think was just kind of giving them a, an assessment on phonological awareness and phon- um, and phonics. The teachers are able to do that um, via Zoom.
Oh, okay.
Board, are there other questions? These, these, this has been a good conversation so far. Uh, Mr. Jolly, if you're speaking, you're still on mute. I do want to say thank you so much, Mrs. Lozard. This has been a lot of good information. Um, and you said the goal is to get all of our district educators into this, into the letters program.
So we'll open it up at the end of this year, well, coming up soon, to see who would like to be involved in our next um, cohort.
Okay.
And that's it. I will give the teachers a lot of credit because again, um, so here's the manual. I'm also going through it. Um, here's one of the manuals. So it is like taking a college course. So they're reading this and they're doing the online modules all outside of teaching, on top of grading, on top of phone calls, on top of communication and lesson planning. So I, I think it's amazing that they're willing to take the steps that are needed to move in the right direction to really get our students reading.
Is it possible that I can review that, that manual? Do you have an extra manual?
I don't have an extra one, uh, but I can share with you, I can send you some information about it. And then, once I'm done with my first part of it, I can lend you the manual for sure.
All right, please do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I just want to say thank you for allowing us uh, to present this evening. We thought it was very important to get our initiative out to all of our stakeholders. And so we thought it was, it was a great opportunity for us to be able to present what's going on with our literacy initiative at the board meeting tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. That was a good, very good presentation and good information.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Mr. Jolly, the floor is still in your hands.
Yeah, so next we have um, Steve, Sean and Doug, uh, to give a facilities update, um, segment two review. So thi- this presentation today will give you a framework for what's going to happen in the next eighteen months. So without further ado, we'll go with Doug, Sean and Steve.
Hey, thank, thank you, Don. I'm going to start us off. Uh, first of all, I want to thank the board for letting us do this uh, segment two review. And we're going to focus it on three, three elements. I'm actually going to hand it off to uh, Sean and Doug. But the three elements are, first of all, we're going to go through the overall schedule. And we're going to look at what some of the key dates, we finally have established those. And I think this is important for the board and also the accu- the community. Uh, we're going to then discuss also uh, the bus garage and its relocation. We have a, a recommendation and we'd like to pursue that. And so we'd like to have that discussion with the board today. And then the third element that we'd like to talk about is to get uh, the, as you know, some of the elements of our project are not uh, uh, co-funded by the OFCC, which include the bus garage and the football stadium and the athletic fields. And what we'd like to do is uh, discuss with you requesting approval to retain uh, our Osborne Engineering. Doug will get into that a little bit later. We already went through the process of selection. They're already part of our project team. But we do have to go under a separate contract. We can't use the main contract that you've approved. That's only for the co-funded and uh, portions of the, of the project. And these are called, called uh, LFIs that are, that are totally independent. And so we're going to ask for that uh, request. So uh, no further ado, I'm going to pass it now on to uh, to Doug and, and I don't know if Doug, you want to start or Sean uh, wants to start. Why don't you start us? Thank you.
Great. Yes, thank you. So where we are in the project is, is you know, we've got um, site cleared out. And so we're working with the architect right now and the engineers. They've submitted what's called ninety percent construction documents. So those are being reviewed right now um, from, from all the rest of the team. They're completing their construction documents. And we're going to be coming um, for, to the board for a GMP for the high school portion of the project in April twenty twenty-one. Now, while that, we still have a lot of work to get to that point, but we've been working on the schedule. We've been working on how all of these pieces come together. And um, we've been challenged to try to see how we can get uh, a lot of it completed as soon as possible. Obviously, there's a lot of benefits for doing that and there's a lot of risks for doing that also. Um, so what I wanted to go over is, as Steve said, is some of the big milestones. And some of the, the key pieces that are kind of coming together. And uh, Mr. Jolly, if you can kind of go to that uh, third page. It kind of has some of these milestones I've, I've just identified. This is simplified. I think uh, you know, our detailed project schedule is, is many. All right.
This should be working on. All right, what do you see on your screen now?
I see the PowerPoint and actually, if everyone can read that.
What does it say?
Is that okay? It's the very first slide.
All right, so that's not right. Let me see. You see the same thing?
No, we, now, now we have it.
Better.
We have it.
It just says segment two, key milestone.
Yeah, if you could go back one slide.
Go back one.
Yes, please. Might just be the up arrow on your keyboard. Hopefully that'll work.
Okay.
There you go, there you go. So big picture, you can imagine, we have the high school that's under construction now. And we're going to have to demolish the existing high school. And we're going to be building an athletics complex with a stadium and with ball fields. So there's a couple of key pieces that need to happen while we do that and to make all that happen. So one of the things we're going to have to do early on is to relocate the middle school students. And um, we'd like to relocate them in May to um, some of the other elementary schools. And what that'll do is that'll free up the site so that we can then go ahead and start working on um, the development of, of the ball fields and also with the parking garage. So they're free up to, I'm sorry, with the bus garage. So with the bus garage is also located next to the, um, the middle school, obviously. Um, we're going to need to get that demolished soon. And we actually need to start planning for the relocation of that. So the demolition of the middle school and the bus garage, we'd like to have those down by the fall of this year. We'd like to start designing the athletic complex as soon as possible. And that's what Steve started to mention. We have Osborne Engineering that's already on the team. And they actually have a, a leg of their company that specializes in sports facilities. So we think we can, with your approval, we can, we can bring them on so that they can go ahead and get going on the design for that now. And then we'd like to come to you with a GMP for the athletic portion of the project um, in the early fall of this year. And what that'll do is that would free up Infinity to go ahead and to start the construction of that. So the overall goal is when we finish the high school and we take occupancy of the high school, we have a stadium in place. We'll have ball fields in place planted, but we'll have to wait, you know, before we can start playing on the ball field, so we don't destroy those. So we want to do all of these things to get us to occupancy for the high school in August fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. And as I said, that includes the stadium. If you can go to the next slide, do, please. So then, there you go. So then, we're going to have the high school complete. And we'll still have work to do from August to December to finish the middle school and to complete the site work and demolish the high school. What we're finding as we're working out all these details is, you know, we have a, a lot of site work and some of it might have to fall back into the spring, but we'll be able to come with more details as this, as it's, it's planned further. Um, the other big pieces and, and milestones that we wanted to talk to you about is the demolition of the elementary schools. So we can go ahead and schools that don't house students, you know, we can be prepared to demolish those. Um, you know, next fall or the early part of uh, next December or so. And then the schools um, that are going to house the middle school students, we would be able to demolish them in the spring of twenty twenty-three. And if we can go to the next slide, it actually has the overall site plan. There you go. So this is a plan, this is like a big puzzle. I don't know if anybody else likes puzzles, but this is a plan that we've asked Infinity to kind of prepare, to take a snapshot. It's okay, where, what is the site going to look like when we have high school students moving into the high school in August of twenty twenty-two? And so what you can see here is kind of the gray area in the center is the new high school.
Oh, okay.
And the way that we've designed this is we have a ring road all the way around the new high school. The area that's a light gray with kind of the pinstripes on it, that represents the existing high school location.
Oh.
Okay, so we're building the high school now. The students are staying in the existing high school. Then when we're ready to go ahead and to move the high school and the, the students into the new high school, then we're going to have to tear down the existing high school. Okay? So we're very concerned about safety, about separation between students and contractors, between the equipment, everything else. You know, we know how important that is. So we've really challenged the team so that we can identify it. And, and just like when we came to you and we talked to you about the first GMP, we showed you plans of this is how we're going to put up construction fences, this is how we're going to protect the students from the construction site. And Infinity and Sean have done a fantastic job to be able to, to, to put that plan together and to show it. We're, we're working on the same thing when it comes time to take the high school down. Okay? But the big picture plan is coming down Northfield Road will have access to what we're calling a north parking lot. And it, it's, it's going to be behind the existing rec center. Okay, so we'll be able to approach the site there. And that's where we're going to be able to have student drop off. We're going to have um, parents who have faculty and staff parking. The students will be able to then come down that small sidewalk to get into the high school. Okay, because that's ultimately where our main entrance is going to be. But then we're also going to have, that road is going to continue all the way around the building down to the south. And then you can see it's going to then head back to Northfield Road and then leave the site. Okay, so we're going to have one-way traffic around the building. And what that's going to give us, the ability to go ahead and get students and faculty and staff to the building. It's going to be able to get deliveries, rubbish removal, everything we need to have so that, so the new high school can kind of eat and breathe and everything else. So while that happens, then we're going to have also when we finish the high school, you can see down kind of the purplish area. That's where the existing science wing is. Okay, so that is still an occupation while, while we have a high school, students in the existing high school. So soon as we can start to remove the high school students, then Infinity can get into there and they can start and working on that area. Yes. So that's why we can't move the high, the middle school students in yet. Because we still have to, we have about half of their school that we can't access until the high school is vacated to be able to do the work. Okay, and again, while we're doing this, we need to be able to make sure that we have safe means of egress, that we have safe access. God forbid there's a fire or something like that. So all of these things are constantly being taken into consideration. So in August of twenty twenty-two, the gray area is going to be complete. We're going to have our access road. We obviously have the rec center, we have the new high school, we'll be working on the middle school. But then the yellow areas, we'd also like to go ahead and get complete. We'd like to go ahead and get the stadium designed and built. We'd like to get the ball fields. And that whole complex, we want to look at all at the same time so that we can talk about how are we going to be able to move people back and forth between events? What's the access going to be like? What are the lighting going to be like? We want to have all of, a comprehensive design of all of that, right? So we have a master plan, but now it's time to really execute that master plan. And that's why we're going to ask you, we want to bring on Osborne and O-Sports to be able to, to help us with that. And then the parking lot over to the left, then that area in orange, that's where Infinity is going to kind of swing their construction group during the demolition of the high school. Okay? So you can see right there that's, we got the middle school and we got the bus garage kind of right in the area we want to develop. So that's why we want to go ahead and we want to start with getting the bus garage relocated and then also be able to move the, the middle school students out. Now, we know that we still have issues with the pandemic and we're trying to plan for that. We had in the new elementary school, we had a good plan in place. We stayed, we rolled with the bumps and the bruises and everything else like that. But we want to put together a plan here where we have what's called float. So just in case something happens that's out of all of our controls, we don't find ourselves in a position where it's, it's not tenable, right? So that's why we're asking if we can move the middle school students out, get them safe in an elementary school. And then try to bring them back as soon as we have the middle school completed, which we're thinking is going to be around December of twenty twenty-two. Okay, then if something happens and something that we can't foresee right now, but we know that things happen that we can't necessarily foresee, then we, at least we have all of the students safe in a location. We can put together a plan and we can continue to work on the building and the site. All right, so that's a lot of my rambling. This is, there's a lot of pieces to this. I can tell you that Infinity is working very diligently. Moody Nolan, our office, we're all working closely together to kind of develop all of these plans and everything. And we wanted to kind of give you an update. So this is where we're at in the project now. This is how the plan's starting to come together. And some of the big things are, you know, we found a way to get the new athletic complex done early so that we can open it with the high school. Um, but the consequences of that is we need to get the middle school students out off the site, keep them safe away from the construction. Okay, does anybody have any questions with all of that?
So.
Of course.
But I'm trying to picture this in my mind. So the athletic complex is going to be where the middle school is.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at having ball fields by where the middle school. And then between the ball fields and the new high school will be the stadium.
Oh, okay.
So that's like where the old baseball fields are now.
Okay.
Like between where the stadium is and the baseball fields are now.
And, and Barbara, those, and Barbara, those are presently our, our lay-down areas, our parking areas and our trailer park to build the new high school. So we call that our site logistics and that's where. And that's where eventually will be relocated to the orange area, which will be a new parking lot. That'll be developed with the designing at the athletic complexes and we'll move there sequentially. So we can build the football field, the track and the associated amenities with that.
Okay, so you're saying. You basically going to. Finish the high school before you do the middle school area, right? So the high school student is gonna be moving into the new building. Before middle school, correct?
Correct.
Only like three months before now, it'd be like Christmas time, the middle school are moving in like after the first of the year of twenty-three.
Oh, okay.
It'll be like at the end of the first semester, the middle school will move in.
Yes.
All right. That's a lot. And what, what is this green, what is the green area, what is it?
So the green is all the site that needs to be developed.
Barbara, this is Steve Zanoni, I do wanna commend you. For first of all, how you understood this because it is, it is a little complicated, all right? And as you can see, I, I'm really pleased that you got it, why, we have to move that middle school. As you can see, we're sort of between two buildings, we're building a new high school, middle school. We have the existing high school, we have the existing middle school, and so we're sort of sandwiched in there. And so conceptually, the best way to do this is we can move those middle school students off-site. We can get every, imagine we get everything that's on the Warrensville side completed. Our problem on the Northfield side is, you know, the kids get out of the high school. In May, late May, but they have to start school in August, so you have two and a half months. It's next to impossible to tear down that existing high school, which is with the lines on it. And do all that site work. You see all that green, that dark green, all that site work is just so incredible. And so you, you just have too much work and we just can't get it done. And to really cause problems, you see that little purple part? That's an existing piece and we had to keep that, that's the old science wing. We had to keep that to get our state funding because it was part of another funded project in the past. And so to this plan, I think is really good because what we do is. We get the kids, the high school kids just move right into a new high school, they finish high school in May. The kids move in, 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 in August and they have a stadium, all right? They have a stadium that's fully functional because it's using artificial turf. And so the band can play there, you know, they can rehearse, they can do all their kind of things. You know, that at least gives the high school a fully functioning athletic complex. And we thought that would be the best, the best route, but I do admire your, so you see, we're sort of stuck with this middle school. Which we have a plan to move them into the existing elementaries. And then, but we also have the bus garage and we gotta, we gotta move offsite. And so that's gonna be the next piece, we're gonna talk about, well, where, where's the bus garage go, all right? But I really have to commend you that you understood this that quickly.
Steve, I have a question, and I think Earl had a question as well. That, that site development, it looks like it's, is it parking? And is it site development because it's gotta be torn up and rebuilt?
Yes, you, in the dark green, the dark, yes, on the Northfield, that's a combination of parking. It has drop-offs for both the high school and the middle school.
Water retention.
Water retention, it does a lot of different things now. It is really designed for parking for major events. We can still operate and what's a little strange, if you look at that gray section of, at the top by the houses. That are, uh, you see that, that's actually a parking lot also over there, so we can get parking. To operate a high school for staff and drop-off, but that's sort of our big. Public entrance, it's gonna have three major entrances, high school, community center. And, uh, middle school, and so it's a lot of work to, to develop that.
So you wanna move to the bus garage?
I have one.
Question, Mr. Jolly.
Um, first, uh, the middle school, oh, with them, we're, we're, what I'm saying, May, we're not interrupting the end of the year, we're waiting until the school year ends and then moving them?
Yes, correct.
And I might be getting ahead of us, but with the bus garage, are we looking for just an interim solution? To start the construction, or are we trying to find our long-term solution and implement that at the same time?
Yeah, I think we have a long-term solution that we'll present tonight.
All right.
In the next few minutes, next second, as soon as we finish, we'll, we'll present. In the solution.
All right, thanks, sir.
Can I jump in real quick and ask a question? Um, you were saying that we would demolish the other elementary schools? When are we looking to do that?
Where is the fall of twenty-one, it is all depends on if we need them. And what the, you know, what the community meetings come from, but they'll be eligible to be demolished as soon as we don't need them.
Okay, so you're saying we'll still be doing community meetings and having discussions what to see, what they want to happen to the buildings?
Yeah, so we still go through the process that we started in March of last year when COVID hit. So we had a meetings to hear what people have to say, what they wanna do. But for the fiscal aspect of it, they'll be eligible to be torn out in the fall of twenty-one. That means we have to have a plan in place, so the plan in place is that if they're not needed, they can be torn down in twenty twenty-one. Of course, we don't have to turn them down to twenty, in, in the fall of twenty twenty-one, but they can be, they actually can be torn out before then, but on schedule. The construction company can't get to them until the fall of twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Forgot, now go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Jolly, though, for clarity about that the building is being demolished, they, um. If we, if we don't demolish them. And then decide somewhere in future state that they do need to be demolished, we will pass a time where the OFCC. Will pay for those, okay, thanks. Buildings to be demolished, so the community. I, I thought that when we first started talking about the community, it was to inform. Um, to explain what was happening, not so much get input because. We have to be able to afford to take those buildings down. Um, they're, they're in bad shape.
So I think the, the meetings were to get input, like what type of industry or what to attract to those areas. Uh, uh, those were the conversations that I recall that we had discussed, you know, to get ideas about. Um, how to maybe market the area, share, you know, the concerns about. We have until the end of the project, so the end of the project will be the. December of twenty-three.
Well, no, actually longer, John, because it, we are allowed, Mr. Mitchell, we're allowed to use them. As swing space and that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna move middle school students in there.
But I was giving them the end date, like to twenty-three, I mean, twenty-three when the middle school is done, or when the middle school students. Have to go into the new school, man, that's, the decision has to be made, either have to be down or we'll eat the, eat the cost. That we already have designated for that.
Okay, thank you, that, that was my question, I think, Mimi, you had another question?
No, that, you reminded me, that's, that's where I was going with the question. But we are just talking, are we talking one or two schools for the middle school swing?
Right now, I think, I think we could do it with one, um, looking at the middle school numbers, we could do it with one, one school.
Okay.
Again, we'll go back to the, and look at it again, but just looking at how many, um, classes and middle school students we have currently. Uh, we could do it with one school.
And then just one final thing in terms of getting community input, so technically. We can get the community input after we've demolished it to find out what they would like to see happen, right?
Yes.
I'm good, thank you.
Earl, did you have any more questions, sir?
You, you asked it, uh, Madam Chair, it was about the timeframe for the demolition.
Okay. All right.
All right, next slide, you ready, Doug?
Yes, yes. So this goes to the bus garage relocation, and, um, so. We've been looking at different options and different plans, I think what, what we have right now is. Looking at with the city of Warrensville, they have, um, offered to let us. Use some of the existing space that they have in their service facility on Miles Road. And it's a very large facility and it has a lot of pros to it. And we've kind of looked at it from a little bit of a financial standpoint and access location standpoint and also. From other, other options that, that are very, very minimal options out there as far as other. Spaces that are available to be able to meet the needs of the district. So quite frankly, when we found this opportunity, um, it made a lot of sense. So it's located at nineteen. Uh, one nine seven hundred Miles Road. And it is the, uh, the facility that the city uses right now, it's a very large facility. Would, they would offer to let us use, uh, spaces for offices. Um, we have a program that's been developed for maintenance and for a bus service. And then also for equipment, storage and bus parking. Um, and the site kind of meets all of those needs. It has good vehicular access off Miles Road so that we can find a route. Where we can make sure that the buses kind of have a light to be able to turn in and out of. And the city has actually offered to have, uh, police assistance if they need to have any kind of help with managing traffic. Um, some of the other good things about it is it, it kind of gives the district some opportunities with the city. Because the city services and the, the district services are pretty similar as far as, you know, buying salts. Buying any kind of malt or bulk goods, and so this kind of facility, perhaps there's, uh. Opportunities for collaboration, for sharing those spaces and maybe even get better purchasing power when it comes time to do those kinds of things. Um, the work that would include interior renovations of the offices. Um, we need to look at, uh, bringing on, um, Osborne to have part of their team to look at accessibility. Um, and we need to do some modifications inside, we need to do site renovation. Um, but we need to do concrete work for the drive and for the bus parking. We would be putting in infrastructure for, um, electricity so that we can go ahead and we can have bus warmers. So in the winter time, they can, the buses can kind of be, be charged up and ready to go when, uh, those cold winter days. Um, make sure that we get enough lighting and, and all of those things in. So I think, I think I also have, if you go to the next slide, please.
Our computer's stuck.
All right, I put together this sketch after we visited, visited the site and apologized, it's, it's a little basic. But I wanted to just kind of memorialize some of the, some of the scope that we would need to do and, and kind of as a talking point for. If we can bring on an architect to, to go ahead and take it to the next level. Down to the, to the lower right-hand corner, the diagonal is North Miles Road. Okay, and then the darker outline is actually the facility building. That exists now, so all of this is existing now. But the areas that we have kind of in the light blue area, you know, that could be areas where we can have bus parking. And we can have other equipment, storage, we can have bulk material, storage. Um, started to identify, um, a grounds bay that's available for the district to be able to use. So the, the big picture is the city of Warrensville will still be using this as a facility. But they have, they have vacant space in it, and so this is space that they've offered to let the district. Look into using as opposed to building new space. And so we wanted to kind of present this idea to you this evening to see if we can get approval to continue the discussions. With the city and then to bring on, um, architects to go ahead and we'd like to get them started. Um, because we'd like to see if this is an opportunity for us to go ahead and to. Do this, this work, and so when we tear down the bus garage, basically, we need to have this work in place by next fall. So that we can be operating out of this, this location, um, when the next school year starts.
So right now, you don't have, you have any idea how much that would cost?
We do, we do, we're looking at about, which is, we have a million dollars allocated for the bus depot. And we believe that this will actually come in less, about half a million dollars, so we would actually save money. If, if we go through this, but obviously we have to go through a process and, uh. Uh, but this, because the building, it also would be significantly larger than what we were originally planning. We were only planning two bays, this has three bays available for us, which would be great because then we'd have an extra bay for. General service beyond just buses and, uh, it's just a bigger site, I mean, it just would, it, it really does. Uh, solve a lot of problems and it comes in less expensive than if we were to build a new facility. And if we, you know, building a new facility also means we have to, where would we put it? You know, some thoughts were on, on Warrensville, but that's such a busy street, we're really concerned about the traffic issues there. For a bus, bus, uh, piece, so that we would like what we're looking for from the, from the, uh. From the board is that we could start those negotiations that you get your, your real estate person that you've used in the past. Uh, to also su- support us, and then we would, on our side as owner's rep, we would get the designers, which we have on board. Put together design of the budget. Final budget.
Yeah.
Uh, if you recall, last year, we had, we had that lead on that one property. That was on South Miles and that price got, it got crazy, uh, out of. Out of our, our price range, um, this, this facility needs less work than that facility does. So, um, and it's, it's, it's similar, I, I wanna say similar size, but it is. Big enough for what our operation needs, and we also can, um, have our operations department there too.
Service department is, Mr. Jolly.
Yes, where the service department is, yes, ma'am.
All right.
And the bays were occupied by the county, so the county, um, had the, had, it was, it's a county building, it was a county building. County vacated the building, um, vacated those bays. And that, those vacated bays, um, that's when the mayor approached us about, um, possibly us. Taking over those vacated bays, so that's why we're coming to you, I wanted to make sure we did all our research and understood the situation. To see if it was feasible, we didn't wanna bring something to you that wasn't possible. And we do believe it is possible that this will be, um, an easy transition for us. And considering our timeframe, it could be really beneficial for us. To explore it, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, we'll go to Plan B.
Okay, which is what?
We can build them, or we can look around for something.
I'm sorry, Earl had his hand up, go ahead, Earl.
Uh, Superintendent Jolly, the, uh, or, or Doug, whoever, uh, could answer this one, the three, uh, bay area, that is, uh, covered indoor. Or where we could do maintenance and the like?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's covered and it has, it has, uh, space inside where we can. Um, potentially build our own entrance to that area and have office and have, uh. Material and parts of storage, it kind of has a, in the back, there, that little rectangle, it's kind of a loft area so that there's. There's a space below and then a space on top, and then there's a three-bay garage so that they move ahead and they, they can hold in.
Okay, so this light blue area is covered as well then? No, like, this light blue area is just outside.
That's outside parking.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, also, okay, uh, financially, would we be, would, would we be looking, would we be buying this space? Will be tenants of the city, will we be, uh, leasing, renting, what will be our, what will be the, uh, financial aspect of, of long-term, going long?
So, so I believe it'd be at least some type of long-term, some type of long-term lease. Again, we haven't talked numbers, negotiated any of that, with us doing capital improvements, that would. Limit how much we would pay, um, for anything, so. Uh, again, that's all part of negotiations, but I do wanna address Plan B. Uh, part of our plan, initial plan was to build, um, a bus garage. A bus garage. So um to explore this option is uh uh is Plan A. But to to um get a bus garage, then that would have to change our mess. You know, we have to build, I changed our master plan because we would have to get a building down as soon as possible to build a bus garage and get it designed. So um just going through the process of trying to figure out what is the best route. Um this is a route, if it doesn't work out, then we'll figure something else out. But we want to bring this to the table. That's all I had. Thank you.
And Mr. Jolly, one of the advantages of this uh scenario though is instead of spending one million dollars. We'd be spending five hundred thousand. We'd be able to point that other five hundred thousand to classrooms.
Um so my understanding though, what we're saying first is you're going to enter into negotiations with them. The board's not committing to anything at this point. And I did hear Steve say something about blueprints and architects. Is that all part of the negotiation process? Or does that happen after we go through the negotiations?
We would like to do that as part of the negotiation. It's not a high expense for the architects to do this because it's existing space. And we want to know exactly how much we're spending because that'll be part of your negotiation. That's why we need to get your real estate lawyers involved. Is that would be the negotiation because once we know the dollars that we would have to put into it, you want to offset that against any kind of rental. And so you want to really have a a tight number of what it's going to cost. So uh we feel it's worth the expense.
And I think we'd like to do a parallel so that that way we can, we can get that information, you know, to the real estate people. So that they know, you know, this is, this would some of the costs of the work that we're looking at doing as part of the investment. And then work that in. And then we have the plan in place so that if that works out, then we're ready to go ahead and actually, you know, start the. Start the price, you know, get the infinity and and start the work.
And the real estate lawyers is is Rotsoll and.
Yeah, I've, yes. Jason Dotson.
Yeah, I mean, Jason, all right.
Okay. How soon before, so I guess you would start discussions right away?
I I think they're they're waiting for us to give them permission to start the conversation.
We need your permission before.
So yes, I was asking if they were going to start right away.
Yeah, we would start right away. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll get updates. How soon do you think before we would get like an update?
We'll go through the same process as we did when we negotiated with them before. So every time we have a negotiation, we'll come back to the board and present what happened. Uh when we negotiate with the city with the lease, we have meetings where we came back with all the information Jason presented. That same process will occur this time also.
Okay. All right, um, thank you.
Board, are there any more questions on this particular topic?
No matter to me.
Mr. Jolly. At what point are you, are you wanting us to go ahead and give you guys permission in this conversation?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any other.
Yeah.
Householder for that. So we were appreciative. I mean, I don't know, is it a vote or just a verbal go ahead or?
I I think the last time we did this, it was just a verbal approval, just to go ahead and have the conversation. It wasn't an official vote.
So that's what we were requesting.
So Mimi, I saw you had your hand up. You have a question?
Yeah, uh Steve said minimal amount for the architects. What do you consider minimal? I just, I thought about that.
I I think uh to to get through the design, it might be like ten to fifteen thousand dollars for the design work. But we we would hold them back as we are negotiating. Uh I need them, we have, we know what the layout is. We're not talking a lot of interior work. It really comes down to all the civil work, which is all that exterior work and. And getting the electrical and things like that. And the way we can do it is I would hold them back up to certain points as we negotiate. And then give them an okay. I wouldn't go all the way to working drawings, Mimi. I would just do initial design documents, which would be very minimal or cost. And then then we just work from there. So we might spend like five to seven thousand at the first blush. Least get our budgets pulled together, working with Infinity. And then if things look good negotiating wise. I would come and ask you, let's go the next step. I wouldn't say, I it it's foolish to spend the money all the way to the end. Because what if this fall falls through? But we do need their help to get a a a good number. Because that number is going to be what if if i- if we have to pay for all of that, which we have the money to do it. You're going to need, your negotiation is going to have an offset through lease, if it's a lease payment. Because you're you're improving the facility, all right? So.
I I want to add something, Doug. We have to build, it's going to call, it might cost more than a million because you got to do more work. Uh ground preparation, got to do a lot more things. So it's it's on our advantage.
We need to know. Yeah, if it's more.
But it might be more than, it might cost more and we might get less than what we currently have.
Yeah.
You mean if we have to build there?
Yes, oh, we definitely would.
Build on one of our school sites or something. There there's going to be more site preparation and things like that, which is going to reduce the size of the building.
Because Steve, you said something about uh Plan B somewhere on Warrensville. Are you just referring to one of the other properties?
Right. Yeah. That that seemed like the logical one, but we could not build three, we don't, for a million bucks. We would be, we're really limited on how much we could spend and what we could do. So we're not going to get three bays, we're not going to get as much surface area, things like that. So to me, that's why. Uh as Don said, if we go a different route, this would work really well for us. Because it's it's already there, it's built, they're big high bays or be great, we can lift buses up. Uh they're bays that fit a bus and more in terms of what they're inside. And so.
You know, Steve, it'd be nice if anybody want to go see the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is arranged that, um maybe this week or next week and just take people to see it.
It's a nice facility.
I know some people work with, be over there anyway. I know Ray probably sent it because he'd be over there with the city, but everybody else, if you want to see it. At any point, we'll arrange with the mayor and we'll go over there and look at it. One, two, two at a time, we'll go over there.
One of the, one other thing, Board, is that it gives our actual maintenance, Rob and Ryan Mimi, uh a place to have an official. Place of office. And they can actually put all of their equipment, their two truck, all of the um stuff when they have to mow the lawns. They can place that over there. I mean, I think we need to review it because it's a great option. Um but yeah, it gives it a a place that they can come there and have their own office and uh Mr. McDonald. Can have his setup over there. I know he has an office at the board, but um it's a good place to have an office.
So when you talk about operations, you brought up a good point, Ray. You're talking, Mr. Jolly, Mr. McDonald, Rob. Um everybody from the bus garage. Administrative assistant, correct? Is there anyone else that you consider operations that would be out of there?
No, that it'll be um basically the business office and transportation.
Gotcha. Okay.
And again, not to, not to keep repeating, but this is this, we're following the same concept that Mr. Jolly and I have done. For the district and and thankfully collaborating with the board to where we want to maximize our construction dollars, our bond. And financing money that we've raised uh for the buildings. Because we're not going to be able to go for any more money in the in the future. So we've done that with the food services. Where the food services contributed four hundred thousand dollars to the equipment for the food services. And then that freed up money to go into the classroom. We did it with the Board of Education. Any opportunity that we have to do that, because that maximizes the construction dollars. Because then if we, if this, if this works out, potentially it'd be five hundred thousand dollars more that could go to classrooms. And that's what we keep. And that's the the uh uh challenge that Mr. Jolly has too. Because we know when we're building, we're trying to build for more because more people are, more stu- more scholars are going to attend. So this this agrees with that concept we've been following since day one.
Could that money go to the classrooms now?
Yes.
I mean, if if we decided to to go this route, could that five hundred dollars be put into the project now at the middle school or high school?
Yeah, most certainly. That's why, that's what Doug and Steve are planning for this strategically.
We would very much like to have that money go for this education rather than for a service center. And and you know, we have looked at, we looked at buying an existing building, that made a lot of sense, but that building was way overpriced. Or maybe it wasn't, but we couldn't, it didn't work with our numbers.
Right, right.
And this, this really, this opportunity, once the county moved out of those three huge bays. That's like half, almost half the building that they already have. That just freed up, that that just. And so the city came to us, said, look, you know, all of a sudden, we've got all this extra space. Uh it it would be really, and and it's located in a less dense location, streetwise. Miles, yes, doesn't have traffic, but it doesn't have, it's not like Warrensville. Could you imagine a left hand turn? Out of the, you you all know that from the old, the old uh 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 board offices. It's a next impossible. And there's so much traffic there. So Miles is just lighter traffic and it would, we we think it's a good location. It really solves a lot of problems.
And if I could, if I could add to just kind of circling back to the schedule. Another fantastic piece with this location is it's not, it's not heavy construction for Infinity. And it's off the site. It's something that we can be doing so that we can kind of seamlessly in this school year. Relocate the middle school students and have a place for the buses to go so that when fall starts. We have a place to operate out of. Um and we can go ahead to demolish the existing one. So it's kind of a lynchpin with the overall project to be able to get the stadium and the rest of the work done. So there there's, that's just another pieces. We're all talking about all of the the different opportunities with this. I wanted to kind of circle around and say, all right, the. It's a pretty big part of the schedule also, that's.
So I just wanted to add, I know this is, this is a lot, you know, it's a whole lot going on. We just came to you today just sharing. That we got to move middle school kids, we got to move bus garage, we got a final bus garage, we building on the, on a football field. And all this is going to happen by next summer, the twenty second. I mean, the twenty two, it's a lot. So I just asked that, you know, and I and I, you know, we communicate often, we're going to keep communicating, keep you updated on what's going on. Uh it's a lot. It's a, it's a journey that um we got to go together. It's a lot of uncertainties on this journey. This is way more complex than the first one because everybody was in their own school. Now we got to move people out of schools. We got to. Determine that we're going to tear down the school. We got to determine um a lot of different things. So um our communication, just sticking to the vision. Um just think back five years ago, no thoughts in no schools. We got us a brand new, pretty, majestic palace that's on Clarkwood Parkway right now. And now we're about to build another one. And it's hard, you know, all of this stuff is like, you know, you're talking things that people haven't done before in this community. I mean, they haven't. This is. Tomorrow, we have the building, um we on the, what is it, the building committee tomorrow?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission tomorrow. This is the biggest product in, uh biggest project in the history of Warrensville Heights. That we've been presenting tomorrow. Biggest one ever.
Hold on, you're saying we will be presenting before the planning commission tomorrow?
Yeah, the architects will tomorrow.
What time is then?
Seven o'clock.
I was going to share it at the end of the meeting. They talked about it in city council last night. Um we're the only topic.
We just got the advice today, but yeah, Moody and Nolan will present our um. Our, you know, the the master plan to get approved by the city uh planning commission tomorrow. But in those conversations leading up to that, this is the biggest project ever in Warrensville Heights history that we are presenting tomorrow. So this is big for them too, that we had to have our own special meeting for them to consider this process. So I I when I speak, uh this is enormous task that we are undertaking as a team. And I understand that, you know, there's a lot of questions and please shoot every question that you have to us so that we can answer them. But understand that, you know, there's levels of trust that we we got the first one done effectively. This one has got a lot of moving parts. Lots of moving parts shy. As we told me, they needed the ninth grade wing. This week, they don't need the ninth grade wing. So we planning, making multiple plans to change based upon what they can do and what they can't do. Um but together, in December twenty two, our project will be complete. And that's where we're looking at, the long term is getting there. So we, it's like a butterfly, you know, it's like a caterpillar to. A butterfly. We we going into a cocoon right now. This next year and a half is going to be a cocoon because we got to do a lot of different things. But together, effective communication, um working with our team, and our team is affinity. Um Steve and Doug and me and the board, um we're going to get there and and keep that vision all in line. Because the vision is what's going to drive this. Um and that's what I think we're doing a good job at.
So I'll say thank you, um you know, for for you guys thinking outside the box. Um my only ask is going to be that any. Information that comes to the board comes to us in enough time to have a discussion about it before the meeting. In other words, like, it's great that you guys are giving us this information now, but as we get closer to the negotiation process, just give us the information. So we can digest it well in advance.
Um if if I can interject here, I, that is the plan. Just as we had already established for the elementary school, the goal is to make sure we're always informed. Fully understanding every aspect and where we work diligently for the most part unless. That we, I think we have one or two situations where they came to us with information and asked for a vote in that moment. But other than that, the the commitment has been made to bring everything to us, send everything to us. So that we have time to understand it, vet it, ask our questions, and then come back in another meeting to vote. Just as they outlined today, we're going to have a GMP in April of this year. Um I don't have the deck in front of me, um because we pulled it down, but they they have already outlined what's coming up in April. I believe there was something else in May of twenty one. So they they are continuing to do what they've done in the past. I think tonight is the one situation where um they are asking us just to give them permission. To go into the conversations as we did in November of twenty nineteen. To uh begin conversations with the city about the bus garage. So I I don't foresee anything changing in the cadence and the manner in which we've received information as we move into phase two. Of this construction project. Because as Mr. Jolly said, it's about open communications. So that we can make the smartest, best decisions. So at this time, are we giving them permission to uh begin conversations with the city over the bus garage?
Madam Chair, I definitely give approval for them to negotiate. Because if you look at one hand, you're spending a million dollars, and the other hand, five hundred thousand. And you know, I'm in in what is in the best interest of children. So if I can hire some teachers out of that five hundred thousand. Or some tutors to go in and help our parents, I'm all for it. So guys, you definitely have my approval.
Well, I I do want to be clear, the money that we're saving goes into the, the the construction costs, not hiring educators.
I know.
Okay, I just want, I just want to make sure we're clear. So the community is clear.
An example.
Okay, understood. Thank you, ma'am. Are are we all in agreement then for for them to move forward with conversations?
I am, Madam Chair.
All right.
Can 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 I just to have the deck sent to the board, or at least me? I'd I'd like to have the the PowerPoint that you guys were just looking at.
Forwarded to you during this meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Board, for um your understanding that we did need to just give them permission to begin the conversation.
Start to talk, yeah, start to talk, talk about it. Let's get it moving.
Yep. What'd you say, Ms. Barbara? Get it done. All right, uh Mr. Jolly, I, is it, if there's nothing else on the facilities update. Are you ready to move into um your superintendent report?
Yes, um and I I'm gonna, I know we, I'm gonna be brief and go through it. This is board appreciation. My, I, something is wrong with my computer. It's going slow. What do you see now? Your certificate for trace. Okay, so that's the one that's working. So this is more school board recognition month. So I just, uh we have the certificates in our. So this is more, school board recognition month, so I just, uh, we have the certificates in our office, in the office, so we will present them to the board, but I just wanted to go through. And just recognize our boards, our board for their great work. And these are the certificates that are here, uh, waiting on you, so we have Ms. Tracy Mitchell. Mr. Earl Roberts. Mr. Ray Freeman. What do you see now?
I think he's still on Ray.
All right, what do you see now? Ray Freeman?
Yep, still Ray.
What do you see now?
Ray's the star of the presentation right now.
Come back in.
That's okay, Mr. Jolly, I know I have a certificate.
Like that TV show, Everybody Loves Ray.
All right, what do y'all see now? Okay, I think it's working now. All right, so next I wanna talk about the return to school timeline, so, um, as you know, tonight we're asking the board to vote on a resolution to return our students to school. Uh, and I want to go through the timeline and some other significant, um, items in reference to that. Uh, so we send a parent stake, um, stakeholder, um, survey home from, um, the first of January to the twelfth of January. Um, all our staff return to our facilities on the nineteenth. Um, our elementary teachers are at home right now, we have an issue with water, um, water pressure at the new school. Uh, we've been working hard on trying to resolve that, Steve and I and the water department will have a meeting there tomorrow, eight thirty, to try to address whatever the issue is, it's something with water, um, pressure from the street to the building. So hopefully we had that reserve, um, resolved tomorrow. On the board, well, tonight considered a resolution for the scholars to return to school. On Friday, we did designate, um, as a teacher professional day. Regardless if the board approves it or not, but teachers will have a professional day in preparation for the start of the second semester. And then if approved, the scholars' first day of school would be the twenty-fifth, uh, Monday. The results of the survey, um, these are the results of last week. Um, we have not confirmed, those students have been confirmed to be online, um, the principals have reached out to all those students. Um, they have allowed some leeway with some to come in based upon, um, class sizes and so forth. But we had, um, um, those are the current numbers of, of students, the biggest number is in the elementary school. Uh, the middle and high school are very modest, uh, with how many students are, have elected to come back. So important, um, information. So our in, in-person class sizes will be at twenty or below. The high school has the lowest numbers and the elementary has the highest. Uh, we have high remote learning classes, grades three or four. Uh, we are exploring all options to assist them going to class sizes, they're over thirty at this time, uh, grade three is over thirty. So we are working hard to try to figure out some solutions to that. And then our online scholars, we continue to have our online, um, school. Um, in the elementary school, uh, we've designated teachers to teach online, and in the high school, they're gonna do some classes. Where the teachers will be teaching the scholars that's in the classroom and online at the same time, we bought them some cameras called swivel cameras, in which the camera follows the teacher around. So the students will be online and the teacher will be teaching the class, and with the low class sizes, um, it's very advantageous for us to learn how to do this at this time. All the other high schools in the area are, are doing the same thing, uh, where they're teaching the kids online while the kids are in the classroom, we had a benefit of having very small numbers in the high school. Uh, some classes that had three or four students in their class or less, um, because the high school students a lot, uh, chose and elected to stay online. Um, safety measures that we taken, bought over a hundred thousand masks, uh, three hundred fifty face shields, we have our front, our thermal imaging scanners everywhere you go. Um, you have to, uh, have your temperature taken, taken, we have bus, bus thermal scanners. Uh, we have touchless thermal scanners, we have the electrostatic spares, uh, hand sanitizers, death shields, there, the classrooms are already set up, their, Dr. Reynolds have set up all the classrooms in the district, the social district. We had a halo, um, air purifier systems, and then we have custom partitions in some classes. So we're prepared, uh, we did start the school year off with John Dewey and Westwood. Uh, we did have great starts at both, um, and we did shut down for various reasons. Um, but I think at this point, we're ready to go back. Um, our criteria to going back, and we set this up, um, to try to give us some leeway on how, uh, we are determining when school is called out, so basically this switch, um, will give us some guidance on how we close or shut down and so forth. So when there's no positive places, um, we'll stay live, learn to stay in person. Now, when we have students who, um, affect the classrooms go remote is when a significant amount of individuals had confirmed contact, so that's in the classroom. Where we have three or more students who have been exposed or have it, uh, we shut the classroom down. Um, the grade level would be shut down if multiple classroom, multiple classrooms in that grade level have experienced confirmed contact. Um, the building to go down, if that multiple classroom expands to multiple grade levels in that building. And then the entire district goes remote when we met that criteria. Um, or there's just a serious situation and we decide to shut the district down. The quarantine is for two weeks, which is ten, ten calendar days. Um, and then we return to the lowest possible level and start over, uh, when that concludes. So this gives us some guidance on how we'll make decisions, um, if the board approves us moving forward. Um, schools is currently in session, um, you know, Beachwood is in session, East Cleveland started yesterday, Mayfield is in session, Ldonia is in session, Orange, Shaker started back yesterday, Solon, Twinsburg, and Green Inspiration and Steam Academy of Warrensville are both in session. Um, Befford will start, um, on February first. So, uh, they talked to their superintendent today and they're anticipating starting on February first. Then I wanna talk about the staff vaccination, so as you know, the governor is offering vaccinations to teachers um, and support personnel in the school districts. So today I was informed that we have two partners that will be assisting us in giving the vaccination. Um, Giant Eagle and Walgreens. Um, we are anticipating, um, and next day or two, they should be in contact with me to determine when we will offer it. The initial first shot will happen the week of February first. And then the second shots will happen the week of March first. So as I get information, I will share that with the board. But at this point, uh, we had over two hundred forty-eight people who said they would take the vaccine, which is eighty percent of our staff. And that was as of this morning, so over two hundred forty-eight, um, staff members have said that they would sign up and take the vaccine as of this morning. But I wanna ask any questions about this, is, I got a few other things, it's not about the return to school. So I'm gonna answer any questions about returning to school at this time, and then I'll move on to some other, a couple of it, um, important updates.
Um, I have a quite, couple of questions, so did you, did one of those slides say what the classroom sizes are?
Yeah, they're less than twenty in person.
Okay, so here's my concern with that, you know, I don't know why education is held to a different standard when it comes to the whole, um, you know, the number of people that, that you, you can, you know, as far as groups are concerned, the number is ten. But we're gonna have twenty people, twenty students in a classroom, can you speak to that a little bit, Mr. Jolly?
Yeah, well, um, as the CDC says, as long as they're six feet apart, that they can be in the classroom, so we've designed our, I mean, our classrooms are bigger at the new school and they're six feet apart. So, um, we're following CDC guidelines, uh, for schools, and it's six feet apart. So Dr. Reynolds has went in each room and separated the room six feet apart.
Okay, all right, and then when you ta- talked about the other schools that have classes in session, they're hybrid or are they all in person, do you know?
It varies, it varies, they're different, different, um, they're different, all of them are different, some are hybrid, some are five days. Uh, we're, based on our numbers, we believe we could go five days, and speaking to our teachers, they didn't think the hybrid worked at all. It was too much disruption, it gives only their two days a week. So based on teacher feedback and, um, our numbers, we believe we could do five days. Yep, six feet apart, um, uh, the only one, uh, probably won't be six feet apart, but they have small class sizes, it's just pre-K. Uh, they have tables, but they, they have less than ten in a class in pre-K.
All right, um, okay, and you're saying all the other classes will be at least six feet apart?
We, we spaced them out, we have pictures, um, that we can share.
Okay. What about data that shows how well the students have done virtually versus, um, in person?
Yeah, so we'll bring our data to the, um, the end of the marking period is on Friday, so we'll bring that data to the first meeting. It's really hard to compare data from, I, I mean, from, and I'll say we'll bring this, the F datas or what achievement data is, uh, we'll bring that to the meeting. Uh, but it's real hard to determine, um, because grades are relative, I mean, teachers gonna give grades. There has not been any state assessment at all to determine, you know, how much they've learned based upon that criteria. So grades are relative, it's based upon what teachers give. Uh, but we won't know until technically, until our kids are assessed from the state assessment. But we'll be able to provide grade reports and things to determine how well students are doing. If you talk to our teachers, especially our elementary teachers, they're clearly articulate that the kids, oh, a large portion of kids are not doing better online. And the grades, I, I mean, the grades are relative, as a teacher, I can give whatever grade I want, and I can, I'm gonna have A's, B's and C's. Last year I'm gonna have A, B's and C's this year. Um, the F's might be more based upon people not participating or not getting online. Um, but, um, our true test is when we're gonna have a state assessment to determine exactly where they are and rela- in that relative sense. But on a local level, raise are relative based upon what a teacher want, you know, wants to provide students. Our thing is how we gonna fail students though in this type of situation, I mean, some things are out of students' control. So I'm not highly, uh, it might appear that the students will do a better note, but I don't think we should be failing students for things that's out of their control. If you, if you don't, you know, if you don't have parental support and nobody putting you on the computer, why should we fail you? Um, but it's a not optimum situation where everybody has equal opportunity. But we definitely would bring those, those grade representations to the February meeting.
Okay. And just can you send us that, uh, PowerPoint also?
Oh, this one I'm doing now, mine?
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Nope, I'm gonna reserve mine for the one on academics, so I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Jolly?
Yes ma'am.
Kids are wearing masks all day?
Yeah, it'd be a mask requirement, everybody wear a mask, that's our requirement in, in the district. All right, so what do y'all see now?
An update.
An update.
Oh, let me see.
You stuck again.
Hey, Mr. Jolly, I, I'm sorry, one more other question. So you said in-person classes, there's twenty.
That's the highest.
Yeah, so what about the number of classes, I mean, students per teacher virtually?
So I, I did share in the PowerPoint that we have third grade, um, that is over thirty right now, that we're looking at addressing. And then we have also, um, second grade where the numbers are getting higher too. So we have to start looking at how are we gonna address lowering those class sizes.
Okay, they're, they're the-
For us to keep the class sizes low in person, the online class sizes have grown. Because we do wanna keep those numbers manageable, so that they're not higher than twenty twenty-one, you know, we wanna keep those low. So that is, um, okay, I'm, I'm good. So next, I just wanted to go over this bill, this bill was snuck in, it's Senate Bill sixty-eight, and this is something about the police in, interactions with students, this is something that was just passed, um, by a Republican, um, senate. And it's, I'm just letting the board know that this is coming down the line where we have to, um, help our students um, have proper interactions with peace officers during traffic stops and other encounters. Um, no one knew anything about this, um, but it, you know, I got this from the ESC today. I'm very concerned about this because, you know, this is about police and interaction and that the government is writing it. Um, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention because it's coming down the line. Um, and no one knew about it, it was just like slid into, um, the legislation.
So will it go, it have to be put into effect immediately, Mr. Jolly?
No, I think next school year, because they have a rough curriculum.
Okay, that's, that's what I, it didn't seem like.
And I can't. I might have to stop this, it's not working. And the last slide is just tomorrow, um, we were, you know, we, the diversity workshops start tomorrow, so registration, they've been registering for the last week, so there's two sessions tomorrow, one at nine thirty and one at one, at one thirty. For anybody that's interested in participating in the project, um, in our secondary project. So that concludes my report, um, open to any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly, are, are there any additional questions, comments, board?
None for me.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you very much to you and the team for your continued work to, um, work toward getting our students back into school. We do understand the importance of safety for all and, um, more to come when we get to that part on the agenda, Ms. Dr. Rock, uh, we're, we're going over to your update now, sir.
On return to the school?
He, he went through that already.
But we haven't voted on it.
No ma'am, that comes in the voting section, this, this is just still their updates.
Okay.
All right, Dr. Rock, whenever you're ready.
Okay, is there any way you could get the slide two, or we could just follow it on the left?
Is it coming in now?
I see the last one, you have to go up to us. There, whoop, there.
Oh, there we go, next slide's good. Okay, just a, a brief, uh, report tonight, um, the new software system, the uniform school accounting system that's, uh, in the state of Ohio, we converted to it, the conversion's complete. Uh, we're in the process of establishing new reports and developing expertise on the new features and the reporting. I think this is gonna be a great program for us, we just had to get over to a learning curve and the development of expertise in the system, next slide. And also another current project that we have that the board approved, uh, uh, last, a couple board meetings ago was the new banking. The transition is in process, uh, although we have to time everything, it's adjusted by our operational needs, you know, like when payroll's happening, the month-end close, site, check cycles, so we have to coordinate all of that. So all in all, the transition's gonna take some time and both accounts will be open for, during the transition period. And I'll let the board know when, when the accounts are open, so then you'll start to see it on the bank rec, you'll see two accounts and then eventually we'll wean off the old account. Next slide, please. Investments and bank balances, um, you'll notice that, uh, we, we transfer funds between the operational accounts and investment accounts. If you followed on the bank rec and the month-end reports from December into January, you could see that there was a higher balance in, uh, our operating account and then it came down, but then you could see that the Star Ohio account went up. And again, we do this to maximize earnings and to prepare for cash flow and for operations and construction payments. So that leads us to where the interest rates are right now, which are very low right now for investments. Star Ohio is currently at zero, zero point zero nine percent, and that's the best short-term rate out there currently. Last year at this time, Star Ohio was one point eight six. And if you went two years ago, it was closer to three percent, so you could see how the interest rate market has been dipping. Um, current investments, uh, if we were gonna, uh, purchase something in order to get zero point one five percent or zero point two five percent, which is still minimal interest, we would have to invest out four to five years, which is not very attractive. Next slide, please. Uh, right now, our district perfo- portfolio, we have investments that are maturing or being called. Uh, and on the high side, we're at three point nine percent, which was really good, so in other words, these were investments that we bought a couple years ago, uh when the interest rates were good. But then on the low side, we have some at point two seven percent, and against, we have a mix. Those are the two, the high and the low range. Um, the higher return investments again were purchased when the market was good and the lower return investments were purchased when the uh market was declining. The next slide. There's two types of investable funds for the district. Uh, the construction funds are very limited because we are limited to the timeframe of uh when the construction process is occurring, and we have to also balance in there the cash flow to make payments along the way. Uh, phase one, all of those investments are mature by now and the uh funds are ready for the final payments. And phase two, we have a two-year window, and it just as you saw earlier in the uh presentation, the cash flow needs along the construction pathway that we're following. Operational funds, we have carryover funds that could be invested up to five years per our investment policy. But I don't like to hit that five years unless we're really getting a good interest rate. Um, so that's why you see right now, what we're doing is we're moving a lot of funds into Star Ohio because that doesn't have a term on it, although the rate is low now, when rates start to go up, that'll immediately get us some interest revenue. Um, and again, then we locked into whatever we bought, that would be good uh investments with a good rate currently, which there, again, the market really is not attractive right now. And then the last slide is there's a then and now on the board agenda for tonight, it's with multi-county juvenile uh uh attention system. And this is courtplace students, and um they're late in their billing, which is pretty common uh in this, in the, in in that the services that they provide, uh the way that they bill. Um, so and on top of that, we received the bill late, and then the court, we had to correspond with them. Uh, we had some disagreements on the interim rates, we had to verify the students. So by the time they got all that information to us and everything, we still have a a then announced, so lo and behold, after it's been all verified through the Puberal Services Department and all of our administrators, there's a twelve thousand dollar uh bill on this and it's due for services that were from uh April two thousand twenty to September two thousand twenty, and then that completes my section.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rock. Right, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I do have a uh I do have a question for uh our treasurer, Dr. Rock. Dr. Rock, uh our bank is now Dollar Bank, you're trying to transfer over, right, Dollar?
Yes, the accounts haven't been opened up yet, but you'll eventually see, I'll let the board know when the account is open and we'll uh ramp into that new, those new accounts.
All right, thank you so much, sir. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, Dr. Rock and Mister Jolly. Hearing none, um we're going to move on into the body of the agenda. We are at section two, and we need a motion on the floor to approve by consent agenda. Items two point one and two point two under the treasurer's report and financial recommendations.
Madam Chair. Oh, Madam Chair, I move uh on item two, on the consent treasurer's report and financial recommendations. I'm looking for items two point one and two point two.
May I have a second? Thank you. It moved improperly seconded. Board, the floor's open for any questions at this point for Dr. Rock. Okay, hearing none, Dr. Rock, can you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Muman?
Yes.
Mister Freeman?
Yes.
Mister Roberts?
Yes.
Miss Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Next on ours, uh hmm, excuse me, next on our agenda is section three. Um, on the floor, we need a motion for approval for three point one, three point two, three point two, three under the superintendent's recommendations and presentations for board action certified staff.
Madam Chair, I move to accept as a consent agenda items three point one through three point three uh for um superintendent's recommendations for presentations of board action certified staff.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, ma'am. Board, is there any discussion here?
No, ma'am. No.
All right, hearing none, Dr. Rock, can you go ahead and call the roll?
Mrs. Muman?
Yes.
Mister Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mister Roberts?
Yes.
Miss Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. So next on our agenda is section five, um I'm going to move into five point one first because it is a resolution. Unless, Dr. Rock, we we can go ahead and I I think we'll leave this one separate. Um, we need a motion.
We are on number four. We're not on four.
Oh wait, did I skip one? Thank you so much, Ray. Tired. Next on the agenda is section four, I need motion on the floor for items four point one, four point two, and four point three for superintendent's recommendations and presentation for board action classified staff.
Madam Chair, I moved at this board uh for the consent superintendent's recommendation and uh presentation for board action classified staff, looking for items four point one through four point three.
Thank you, may I have a second?
A second.
It has been moved improperly seconded, thank you, Miss Gator. Uh, board, is there any conversation on this topic?
Madam Chair.
Hearing none, Dr. Rock, can you please call the vote, I mean, the roll? For the.
Mister Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Muman?
Yes.
Mister Roberts?
Yes.
Miss Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Now we will truly move to section five.
Yes, we will.
Um, we've got three items, and we're going to vote on section five point one, the resolution to return to school in person. And, Dr. Rock, just to confirm, we don't need to read through that resolution?
No, you do not.
Are we able to vote as that as a consent agenda, or do we need to vote on that separately?
It's the board's, it's the board's discretion, um there's no requirements on this one. Usually the ones that have the requirements are those bond uh related uh and levy related
Okay.
Uh resolutions where it has requires a separate vote.
Thank you so much. So, board, do we want to vote consent, or do we want to separate five point one?
Can we separate five point one, please?
Sure can, if I can have a motion on the floor to approve item five point one, the resolution to return to in-person instruction.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I move the number five on the tonight's agenda, the superintendent recommendations and presentation for personnel and programs, looking for item one, five point one, the resolution to return uh in-person instruction.
Thank you, may I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion.
I just think to it, um uh, Miss Gator, you wanna go first, and then I can go later?
Yeah, I can go first, um so I think that the first thing I wanted to do is just kind of applaud those educators that have said that they want to be back in the classroom with their students. Um, I I think they're brave and and it shows, you know, a different level of de- dedication. So I just believe that that we'd be remiss in not taking advantage to of of this opportunity to just say thank you. Um, I also wanna say thank you to the parents that that have decided to bring their parents back. Doesn't matter what the reason is, whether it's for work or daycare, socialization, we all know the risks. But as parents, we have to do what's best for up for our students, right? Um, I also wanna address that that those educators that don't feel comfortable coming back into the building. Um, I'm with you a hundred percent, I I don't trust COVID, and these days, it's it's not look, it COVID doesn't discriminate, you know, um it's like playing a game of Russian roulette, it it doesn't it, you don't know, it it, you can't even say if you're gonna get it, to me, it's a matter of when are you gonna get it? Even with the vaccine in the fu- future, we still have a long way to go before it's distributed. Um, so I I did wanna say that, I I also just kinda wanted to state, you know, look, I I'm, this is something that I've struggled with. Like I mentioned, Mister Jolly and and Board, you know, we're still under a stay-at-home order until January thirty-first. Um, and why is that? Because our numbers are still high. Um, you know, CDC has said that we need to limit the gatherings to ten people. I I'm confused, and I know no one has that answer as to why that does not include school districts. It's not like so students can get COVID. Um, we all know that, the numbers, you know, even though that the data's kind of been all over the place. My concern is not just for students, but it's for staff also. So for me, I'm choosing safety over everything else. So this is what I'm struggling with, and I just wanted to say that. I applaud everybody, I think we all understand the concerns, um I just don't feel as though we're in a safe environment right now, so I, that's all I had to say.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ray.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm I'm so sorry, let me state one other thing, and I'm very sorry.
No problem.
I also wanna say to Mister Jolly and his staff, um what I'm saying is by no means a reflection of the work that you and your team are doing to keep the staff and the students um safe. I am still of the opinion, though, that no matter what we do, we can't control what's coming into the buildings. So I have to applaud you as well, because I know that this has not been easy for you and your your team. That's, I'm I'm good, I'm sorry about that, and thank you.
I'm sorry, no problem. Madam Chair and uh Superintendent Jolly and Dr. Rock, um, we have the greatest staff in Warrensville Heights City School District. We have educators come in, they do their work, we have janitors, we have security, we have um uh parent liaisons. We have great staff. But one thing that the board members that came on before, um Vice President Roberts is that and Tracy, you talked to this to me back in two thousand sixteen, we went to those classes for social and emotional learning. And at this crucial time with all the children, not just in Warrensville City School District, but across the country, they're going through social and emotional um trauma, not just from the learning, just from being home. Uh, Superintendent Jolly spoke to it, not having a parent there. They need that touch of another human being, they need not to be in that house just looking at a computer for three or four hours. I mean, our teachers, um they do a great job, and I know some is very scared, and I and I'm scared for some of the students, but when when you do your research on other districts other than Ohio, you look at Texas, you look at Arizona, you look at Georgia, the safest place for a child right now is in a, is in a classroom. And Miss Barber spoke to this many times, but I feel that our staff, along with Superintendent Mister Jolly, Mister McDonald, is doing everything along with Dr. Reynolds to make sure our facilities are clean and ke- kept kept clean for our students that return. Um, we don't know, like Mimi said, we don't know, but I know I can't have a generation of children not learning. And that's where I'm at now, cause they have to learn. I've talked to some of those parents that said, Mister Freeman, my child is about to commit suicide. When a parent in the district come to me about their child about to commit suicide, it touches my heart to say that that child need to be in school, cause that parent is reaching out, cause they can't touch that scholar. So, um, I mean, it's a hard decision, and I I I understand Miss Gator, I understand her truly, and I understand our educators. But those children is the next generation of our future, we need them in the school, they need that social, emotional uh learning, Tracy, that we took those classes for you or five years ago, so um that's just my stint on it, but I I feel safe that we can protect them in our buildings. I'm done.
Thank you, go ahead, Earl.
Uh, I actually, um, I think Ray and uh Mimi both made very valid points, I have, you know, respect for all about my fellow board members. Uh, but I do, um, I I I like the plan uh that Mister Jolly uh showed us that he and uh Dr. Reynolds and the staff have put together, I was, I was paying attention uh to the safety switch, you know, where they would uh would would have the different levels. And I, and 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 right up front, when we talked, when we saw the uh participation, and when I was seeing what some of those parents were saying, we we owe it to, we owe it to these scholars to at least try. I I think that we do um need to, you know, we have a plan together, let's 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 put them back um in school. And 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 let's try to give them that that camaraderie uh with with their friends. Let's let them get out, let them get out the house and uh get off uh those uh Chromebooks and those iPads or whatnot. And um let them have some of that uh socialization, and let's let's just uh give them the best safest environment uh that we can, and just try to educate them in in the best way uh possible. And if we can't do it, then we'll, you know, switch up and go to um our next plan. But um I I I do think that we owe it to uh these scholars to give them the opportunity to get back, socialize, and learn with their peers. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Miss Barber.
I want to, first of all, thanks to te- thanks to all of the teachers, to thanks to all of the educators. They're willing to go above and beyond for our children, because that's what we are doing. Again, I have always said, we cannot work in fear. We can go dr- get in our car and drive down the street and have a bad accident. But that doesn't stop us from living. We need to make sure that that everything is in place for our children. Mister Jolly and his staff has done a beautiful job to ensure that our staff is safe and our children is safe. We wouldn't be doing our job if we don't even try to educate them. I feel sorry for those parents that have to go to work, they have no choice but to go to work. But they don't have anybody at home to monitor their children on these different computers and stuff. And I'm saying this from personal experience, because I'm looking at my two grandbabies. They are not doing well on these computers, they need in-person, and I told my son that. And I feel the same way about every other child in, I'm gonna say in the world. Because I want to give them a fair chance. I was out in Whitcliff today. Those kids are in school. I would say, Mister Jolly, you're not trying. If I don't see him making a plan to put our children back, he has done that. And I'm saying, I support him, I support the staff that willing to come back, one hundred percent. If you feel that you at risk, please, let let someone know. But let's not not do our job in educating our children. That's all I'm asking. Thank you, and thanks again.
Thank you all, um, go ahead, Mister Jolly, I saw you looking to speak.
I just wanna share, cause again, I share the same sentiments, I owe Miss Gator, I definitely and I've had some very long talks with Miss Gator about her concerns and her thoughts, and I appreciate um her and and her sharing her feelings, because I know a lot of people feel the same way she does. And no, I share her concerns also, um, um, as a personally, as relatives in the district, as a ten-year-old son myself, share the same concerns. Um but as a, as the superintendent, just as a person who understands how this goes, um, our students are falling behind daily. There is no way that a student who are not in school, you know, those of us who are adults who take online classes know that we're not learning as much on the online classes than we do when we sit in front of a person, we know that. Imagine you in kindergarten, and you never step foot in the school. Now, if it was fair, like it was in the spring, where everybody was out, all districts was out in the, in the spring, I I I would agree and say that we all need to be out. But it's not fair, because everybody is in, if you look around North East Ohio, everybody is in, so for um certain school districts, um but everybody else is in. So as the steward of the students who live in this community, it's our obligation to give our students a fair opportunity to compete in the world. And right now, um I know our teachers are doing their best, our parents are doing their best. But again, the measure stick, and when the stick is measured, we gonna come up short. We fought very, very hard to um come out the bottom or the rankings of the districts and so. to um come out the bottom or the rankings of the districts and so forth. Our teachers worked double hard. They they did everything, went above and beyond the call of duty. But just imagine you as a kid and you supposed to start school as a five-year-old and you never stepped foot in the school and you're on a computer for two hours a day. Just imagine where you would be. Uh, it's real easy for people to say, you know, because then a lot of people will tell us that they don't want to come in and work, but their kids go to school every day. Every single day. You could go to dinner, see the schools open. I took my mother to the doctor. I went by a school and I was surprised at the action I saw at the school. This is everything. Went through Mayfield, everything, went through Beechwood, everything looks normal. And those kids, are they more deserving than the kids that live in Warrensville? Are they more deserving of education? Then my niece who's in first grade, who in John Dewey, is they they more deserving of in-person education than the students that live here? Those teachers and staff members and Beechwood and Solon and everywhere else um are similar to the ones that work in Warrensville. And they go to work every day and make sure kids are learning. I understand and respect the risk. We as a district, uh, whenever something happens, we just shut down immediately. We have not continued to put people our way. We make the decisions that's in the best interest of our staff and our students. But we owe our kids an opportunity to compete with all the other students in this area and in this world. And right now, we not giving them that opportunity. The ones that want to stay online, we providing them that opportunity. But the parents who we had a parent drop their child off last week at the elementary school because she just was tired. She couldn't do anymore. She needed assistance. Our child needed to be at school. And what's going to happen? And 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 a lot of people say, well, you know, this will be overweight and this and this and that. What is going to happen when it is over? And and my fear is going to be the same as it was when I came. People talk about Warrensville, how terrible it was and how the kids couldn't learn and how this and that. And when we had an opportunity to act, did we? Or did we not? When everybody around us, I put a big list of schools that all in session, that's trying to go back. And what do we do? Are we going to attempt to go back or we going to say, no, the kids are ones who don't deserve it? But the kids where we live at do deserve it. Me as a superintendent or just as a human being and as a person who care about the students in this community, I have to try and 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 have to present the opportunity for our students to get this this shot um to learn and and be able to get the same thing everyone else get. Because if you drive through all these communities, you're going to see kids actively in school. And when you drive through ours, you don't. And I don't think that's fair and I don't think it's right. And I think that we should give our kids that opportunity to at least try. And if we got to shut down, we will. But we have to try. So I I just wanted to share that because it's very difficult. I do not want to put anybody in harm's way. I don't want to put any kids in harm's way. Not no, not any person. And um but morally, we have to try because everybody, any everybody around us is. And um, what's what's the exception for us? And that's the question I challenge. Anybody who say we shouldn't go back, no, no disrespect to their feelings or anything. But if Rexville could go back, if Homestead Falls could go back, if all these other places could go back, why can't Warrensville? And that's I pose that to anybody, um, to say, what's the difference? And I understand, Ms. Gator, I'm not pointing that towards you anywhere. I'm just sharing that with other people who have, you know, who live in other areas and it's okay for their children to go to school, but it's not okay for ours. That's my concern.
Thank you. I I want to thank everybody for their comments. I'm I'm not going to belabor the topic um because everyone has a tick articulated what I believe everybody feels. There are fears and concerns. We are all very respectful of this virus. Uh, we do fully understand that it 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 can take anybody hostage at any time. But what I've said from um the onset is we're at a place in our lives where we truly have to look out for one another. As we make the final decision on whether or not we return to school. Um. We know that parents are doing what they can. We know our educators. All of our team members are going to do what they can to keep themselves safe, not only in the classroom, but our actions outside of the classrooms are important as well. So it's, this is hard. It's it's it's, this is not an easy road to tread. It it just isn't. Anybody that says it is, is just a bold-faced lie. Um, and we go into this decision and this vote with I I believe all of our hearts, all of our minds trying to stay very focused on the science, um, the technology that's been put into place. And then, bottom line, doing what we can to do the absolute best for our scholars. So, um, I want to say, you know, if our hearts and minds are ready, if we can go ahead and take this to a vote. So with that, Dr. Rock, can you go ahead and call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Gator?
It's a no for me.
Mrs. Mumen?
You're still on mute, Barbara. Barbara.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
I'm mute. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes.
Miss, miss, Miss Mitchell?
Yes. This vote passes four to one. And as we move to the next session, um, again, we do understand that we all have to do our absolute best, parents, educators, employees, ourselves. We just have to do our absolute best to take care of each other.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we take care of each other, we can get through this and we we just have to hope and pray that our parents are just as committed to keeping their their children safe as our educators and all of our other employees are going to be committed to keeping uh um themselves safe as well, so we can keep all of us safe. So I know that was a vote, um, that was hard, but I do thank you guys for the open and honest conversation. I'm not sure what's happening, Mr. Jolly. We're seeing your email. That's okay. That's okay.
Need a motion, Madam Chair?
Uh, wait, wait, no, I'm gonna, I was waiting for him to come up with the agenda. But as as we're waiting so we can keep going, we do need a motion on the floor uh to approve by consent agenda. Items five point two, the high school twenty twenty-one course of study and five point three, the college now, um, memo of understanding for WHS just for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept as a consent agenda items five point two, high school courses study and five point three agreement, college now, MOU for the twenty twenty-one school year.
I think, ma'am, can I have a second?
Have a second.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded. Uh, Board, is there any discussion?
I do, Madam.
Oh, go ahead, please.
Superintendent Jolly on item uh, on item uh five point two, um, you're going to bring that in and are you starting that already? That study?
Oh, no, that would be starting next school year.
That's what I thought. Okay. Thank you. I say, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, sir. Um, if there are no other questions, Dr. Rock, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Mumen?
Barbara, I think you might, no. Oh, you're not on mute. Can can you hear us, Barb?
I can.
Okay, he's calling for your vote, ma'am.
Oh, I didn't hear it. Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
And Miss Mitchell?
Yes, sir. Vote pass, the motion passes five zero. Thank you, guys. Next on our agenda is, we don't have any unfinished business. Next on our agenda is a vote for board members who want to attend the school negotiations workshop. So can I have a motion on the floor for uh approval and then we'll, after we have the motion, we'll discuss it.
Madam Chair, I move, um. So what am I, what am I making a motion for? Just to have discussion?
Attendance, to approve attendance at the school workshop, negotiations workshop being um sponsored by Pebble and Wagner.
Madam Chair, I move to accept item seven, seven point one, school negotiations workshop um to be provided tomorrow by Pebbles and Wagner.
Is there a second? Thank you. It's removed and properly seconded. Now we can go into a discussion. I do want to add, yep, the the live session is tomorrow. Um, there will be virtual um remote where people can remote in and just review what happened yesterday on either Monday, next Monday, or again on February twenty-fifth. Um. So before we go to a vote, I know Mimi, you definitely said you wanted to go. I did want to go, but I now have another commitment, another meeting I have to attend. So I won't be able to attend. Are there any other school board members that would like to attend this? So we can add your list so that Dr. Rock can go ahead and get um the registrations facilitated.
I would like to say, put me down for Monday, um, since I know that we've got this planning commission meeting. I would like to sit in on that.
I think once you pay and and
Does it matter?
I don't think so. I think you'll get a link that you'll click to go back in and look at, look at it at another date. But you would
Looks like, yeah. I'm sorry. It looks like the link is good for a whole month. It goes from Monday, January twenty-fifth to Thursday, February twenty-fifth.
Okay. All right. I just know to be on demand after Thursday session. Well, if that's the case, you know what? I forgot about it being on demand. I I too would like to attend, Dr. Rock.
Who? I I'm so sorry. I'll have to, I need the uh, um.
I made the motion for a second.
No, I mean, do I just call Donna to register for this?
Um, I can go back and look. I would, I think we all got a letter and I'll go back and look at the email following tonight's meeting.
I have it up. I can see if I can.
I'll just, I'll just call Donna or Chris Williams. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's just, it's non-traditional. I I was looking for it on OSBA.
No, no, this is Pebble and Wagner. This is their sponsoring.
Okay, so we have Miss Mitchell and Mrs. Gator so far. Anybody else?
Is there anyone else?
Oh.
Okay. We'll get you registered.
Thank you. So with that, can we now have a vote on the, a vote for, to approve Mimi and I attending this?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mrs. Gator?
Yes.
Mrs. Mumen?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Miss Mitchell?
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um. And after we attend, because there is such a long window for us to be able to go back in on demand, we will present what we learned later in probably just in March, because that way we have from next Monday through the end of February to attend on demand and we will make sure it's on the agenda for the two of us to present what what we learned.
Madam Chair, is there a cost for this event?
Twenty-five dollars.
Okay, good.
Okay. Dr. Rock, is there any correspondence?
No, there's not.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Um. We do have the Equity Symposium with the NSBA coming up. Um, you want to hold that to February third?
Hold, I'm confused. Hold what? That one is free. That's the, yeah, that's free.
We don't need a presented and who's uh go to it or.
We 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 can present. Um, I think you're the only one that signed up to go because I know we talked about it once before. It's during the day and the rest of us have kind of said no. Was anybody else going to, has anybody else registered for that pre-session?
What time does it start? How long does it last during the day? Do we know?
It's all day. It's all, it's all day. It's from eight to four. It's all day. On a Saturday, I mean, on a Wednesday.
No, it's on a weekday. Yeah.
I doubt that I'll be able to do it.
Okay. So Ray, probably the same time, we'll we'll just dedicate whichever meeting Mimi and I.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
And and then we'll just do the three of us doing an update, if that's okay.
Fine with me.
Alrighty. Thanks for reminding us though about that that session. Just, just a reminder, um, as we talked about early, there is a special planning commission meeting tomorrow, January twenty-first. Caucus is at six PM, seven PM is the meeting. It's the same pass code that we normally um use to access the the city council meetings. Um, if you go to their website, that code is on there. And um, as we shared earlier, our school is the only topic, so I don't know if I'll be able to participate in all of it because I do have another commitment, but I do look forward to hearing how well the conversation goes. So with that, we are going to need a motion on the floor to adjourn this evening's meeting. May I have a motion?
Um, Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
May I have a second?
A second.
Meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great evening and thank you again. I know this went a little bit longer, but it was a good conversation. Um, hard topics, very hard topics. And um, we look forward to hearing um from the team, Mr. Jolly regarding the bus garage. And I I know you guys will stay very close to everything that's happening um relative to our students returning back to a learning environment. So with that, um, everyone take care, have a wonderful day. And again, congratulations to our new president and our new vice president.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, everybody.
Take care.
Right.
Good night, Mr. Jolly.